No, he's already sworn in. Would you please raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Holly Smith.
I, Terry Kaminsky.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington?
Of the State of Washington.
And I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Perform and discharge?
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
City of Yelm, city council, position number?
Seven. City of Yelm, city council, position number four. And seven.
According to law?
According to the law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Amen. Thank you.
All right. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Blair?
Here.
Councilmember Crossman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Hess?
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky? Mayor Joe Dependo?
Here. Thank you. And so we'll cross off option number, action number eight, the new council member swearing in. We'll go over briefly the mayor and council roles and responsibilities. This is something that we'll have a book for you, a little packet that all the council members will get. Please read it and make yourself familiar with it. For the, right now, the biggest things that, that I just wanted to bring up was committee attendance. We'll be doing committees. After you decide when the, the process for selecting the last two council members, we'll go ahead and select all those council members at the same time. Hopefully it's next week, but that's up to your, your discretion, this council. If you want to take more time, it's up to you. But we'll go ahead and do it at that time. Same with the mayor pro tem, we'll all do it at all at the same time when we have a full council. I, I don't anticipate this being a long drawn out process, but again, we'll have that conversation, or you will. The other thing is the relationship between council members and staff. I'm very much open to any of you reaching out to the staff, but through the department heads. So if you have a question regarding policy, regarding whatever you want, if you have a question with city business, please feel free to reach out to the department heads and I've instructed them to be as very open with you, not to hide anything, not to share whatever information you need. If it's going to be like a long drawn out conversation, I ask that you schedule a meeting with them just to respect their time because, you know, they're doing the, the work of the people, so we want to make sure that they can continue doing that. But other than that, feel free to contact them, contact the chief, excuse me, city administrator, acting city administrator, Stansel, with any of your questions as well. He's probably your best bet to start off with if you have a question on anything. He can either answer it, or he can direct you to who you need to chat with. And then, and then me too, if you have a question, I can answer it, feel free to reach out to me. Text, call, email, whatever you need, I'm pretty available for you. Those are the big, big items. Then we've got arguments that kind of tells you how to run a meeting, parliamentary procedure, what's appropriate and not appropriate to say. I'm going to try to run it as closely as I can to Robert's rules of order. Just be respectful, just be respectful when other people are talking, it's a basic thing. But you can, I'm not going to go ahead and talk about this and lecture you on it, you can read through it yourself. I ask that you do it this week, so you can prepare for this upcoming meeting in a week, our first city council meeting. And other than that, any questions, comments on roles, responsibilities? All right, move on. Item number C, Cody, would you mind stepping up and talking about the water reclamation facility?
Yeah. Pat, if you're there, can you share the bullet point list? With the WRF amendment?
I get a message that the host is disabled participant screen sharing, can I get screen sharing, please?
Can we do that? Erica? I have a good feeling she'll get it done. So I'll just kind of briefly, while they're figuring this out, introduce this. So there's two big ticket items coming up for you guys, one is the water main, which Pat will explain after this. The other one is the WRF amendment. So there's a lot of things that as we were getting this WRF planned and the construction done, that we knew we could tack on to kind of knock it out and do it at once instead of tic tac and knock it out slowly over time. So this amendment includes a lot of the things, some of them, which will be up on the list. Grinder pump, so looking at the study of how to put grinder pumps in instead of step tanks. Outflow, so we have an outflow that goes to the river that has been there for 20 plus years and has never been camouflaged or bored or inspected to see if the flow is still good. We know that the flow coming out is less than what it should be, so another part of this amendment is that study to see what the outflow will be. Pat, I'm running out of memory of which ones are on there. But there's a, there's an exhaustive list of things on there, so we wanted to talk to you guys about it now, so to know it's coming up. It is budgeted and planned for, we knew there'd be an amendment of some sort to just kind of get us to the finish line. This is the last part that'll get us to that finish line of actually building the WRF. Most of it is liquid stream, which you know is the big one, we got the loan for solid stream, there's very little that needed to be amended. Just a little orientation thing where we want to move the orientation of where things are, so.
So I can run down that list if you'd like?
Yeah, pull it up, Pat.
If I can.
He's on, he's got co-hosts, he's going to pull it up now, I can, I can feel it.
There we go.
Council, we'll bring this up because it's going to be on the next agenda, so this is why we're bringing it up. There you go. You slide the things over. The little things, they can see all the different stuff. There you go. Yeah, so these are all the things that the amendment is taking care of. You can look through it, and I'll let you look at that and then ask questions about this. It'll be coming to you guys next week. This will be the last thing to get us to the finish line of the actual construction. Planned construction will be, not planned, planned bidding will be in March with the idea of go to construction in early April for the new water reclamation facility. Is this already budgeted, Cody? We already, yeah, the budget is for this. This was not, obviously, when we first did this, we didn't plan for this expense, but as we were moving along and we knew this project was taking off, there was things we wanted to get done that would be better to do as part of the overall project. And with that loan money, instead of, you know, over the next year going, oh, now we need a rain cover. Oh, now we need to do a grinder pump study because it would be more expensive if you could single, single tic tac these. So we did them all once, which we have, are doing now. This, it'll save us quite a bit of money in the long run and it'll get us to where we need to be.
Cody, do you have like a ballpark of how much you're saving? Like, like a little like this?
No, I mean, each individual, you think each individual engineering estimate for these kind of things is anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. So if we're putting these all together and just having one amendment for a few hundred thousand is better than having several fifty, hundred thousand dollar tic tacs over the next five years. So, and then, like I said, the money is there and we can use the loan to pay for some of these actual constructions of things like the outfall pipe, the new pumped outfall. If we need to upgrade that outfall, which we might have to for our future growth, we can use that loan to pay for it, there's benefit of doing that and having that on there, so.
And council, feel free just to ask your question, I mean, if multiple people, be respectful, but if you have a question, just go ahead and ask.
Talking about the grinder pumps? Talking about at the water reclamation facility, or at the individual houses?
Yeah, so we currently, if you know, our system's kind of complicated, we have what's called a step system, which a lot of people aren't familiar with, but the idea is our step system prevents solids from getting to the plant. That sounds like a good thing, but it's not. So our plant has an issue with something called BOD, which is food, which you need solids to kind of create these bacteria and survive. Our plant doesn't get those things, we have to artificially do that, we have to add carbon or add chemicals to that to get to that thing we want to do. With grinder pumps, what that does, it's in your home, instead of a giant step tank in your yard with those two giant lids, you have one tiny lid of a small tank, it grinds everything up that you flush and shoots it to the plant. And then when it gets to the plant, we now have food for the plant. It's a lot cheaper too for construction companies, so anywhere, a step tank can cost a construction company that puts a new house anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars per tank to put it in. So when they're building the house, that's an extra thirty thousand dollars they add on. A grinder pump is between five and fifteen. So someone building a house is going to save fifteen thousand dollars, so you're helping the developers and builders with that grinder pump and it brings us food in the long run.
How does it save, save money for us as well?
So the good news about grinder pumps is we don't maintain them like we do step tanks. So step tanks right now, if your alarm goes off, you call, we come out there, we handle your step tank in the middle of the night, and that's what we do. Grinder pumps, if the alarm goes off, it has a warranty, there's a company, you call them, they come out and handle your grinder pump for you, you own your grinder pump, it's yours. So you can replace it, upgrade it, whatever you need to do. And the city doesn't have to maintain that, which as we grow out to seven, eight thousand homes, having two guys maintain seven thousand step tanks is going to be very costly, so it's just a good way to move away from this. Still.
This is in reference to future development, the grinder pumps are for future, not for current.
Correct. So the idea of what would happen, there's two options we have, and that's why kind of this analysis was done, is when step tanks fail, they have about a twenty to twenty-five year lifespan. When they start failing, which our newest, our oldest step tanks are getting to that time where they're going to start failing, we have to replace that whole tank, which will cost, since the city owns a tank, we have to replace it. So if we're replacing a tank, we're putting in forty thousand dollars to add a new tank in. With a grinder pump, we replace with a grinder pump for ten, five to ten, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, then we hand the grinder pump over to the homeowner. They now own the pump, their rates can be lower because they're not paying for step tank maintenance and they now have a grinder pump in their yard and we don't have to worry about them. So it's, it's good all around, you'll have a, this, and I, we're very early phases of this grinder pump study, but what will happen when we do come at you guys with a grinder pump approval for development guidelines, there will be a rate adjustment for people with grinder pumps. So if you had a grinder pump, your rate could be anywhere from fifteen to twenty dollars lower a month because you're not paying for us to come out and do maintenance on that tank anymore. So you're just paying now for the hookup and the pipes connecting to you, so.
So does that mean over time the city is going to be digging up every yard?
Ah, so here's a good question. The best, the greatest, greatest news about this is that a step tank can be converted to a grinder pump. So when a step tank fails, we can seal off one chamber, fix the other chamber that's already there, and drop a grinder pump in. So you don't have to dig up a yard, you open those step tank lids, you seal off one, close it, now the person doesn't have two lids in their yard, they now have one, you fill up and modify that one to be a grinder pump.
I volunteer.
Yeah.
How big is it?
The grinder pumps, fifteen hundred gallons? Fifteen hundred gallons, that is right.
Why didn't they put those in in the first place?
Because in order for this, this is part of what the new plant will do. In order for the plant to accept this solids, you have to have a screening system. The plant that they built does not have a screening system or what's called a headworks. So we're building the headworks with the new plant, the headworks can now screen that, and the reason you have-
Wasn't in the technology before?
Oh, it was, they just didn't build them, yeah. And I, I don't know, it saves money building, not building a headwork, headworks are expensive, maybe they just wanted to save money, they had step tank idea. I don't know why they picked step tanks, but it's what we are stuck with. But when you have these solids coming, you need a way to screen them because kids will flush things down the toilet, you'll get, you know, you'll get random things, you can't have those going into our actual MBR system, so that screening system will catch those and catch rocks, you know, wedding rings, egg shells, stuff that people flush down the toilet that shouldn't be doing, yeah. So whatever, it's, it's just a great system. Yeah.
When you explained the grinder pumps, you stated that it's no longer the city maintaining it, it becomes the homeowner itself.
Correct.
There's going to be multiple questions here. Problem is, when that gets in, how, how long is that, how good is that warranty for? And then, how much, what is the average cost to the homeowner when that sucker breaks down?
Yeah, so the warranty for most, what we looked at is about five years, five year warranty for anything. After that, the majority of what, and I hope Jeremy doesn't get mad at me or sewer guy, because if I've botched this, the majority of what happens is the pump will go out in the grinder and that can be replaced for anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars. And the grinder pump hole is assembly, once you have the grinder pump installed, just putting a new grinder pump in is anywhere from four thousand and under, just depending on the size of the grinder pump. So the average cost to homeowner, they don't, they're good, they have a ten year lifespan plus, so ten years what they're kind of guaranteed to last for. At that, you might need to replace the pump for a couple hundred dollars, but you've saved twenty dollars a month on your utility bill every month, so you're, I mean, in the lifespan, you, it'll save the city money and it'll save the homeowner money if they maintain their grinder pump properly. So I mean, if someone's flushing diapers down the toilet every day, they're going to kill their grinder pump, if they're flushing, you know. So as long as the person's operating the grinder pump, it'll work for years and years and years, but if you're not operating correctly.
And then how's it going to work for those that are renters? That all of a sudden, everything comes into play? And are they, or is that going to be part of the? Because looking at as a renter, you're renting and you're hoping that somebody's going to maintain the home and they're maintaining a certain amount, but then there's certain things that they go, hey, that's something you have to kind of take care of yourself. That can be, is, is that normally seen when it comes down to the renters? That the homeowner or the management company is going through the full replacement portion of and maintaining the?
Yeah. It's a good question. So the, and that's totally between a renter and homeowner. My guess is what most homeowner would be responsible for maintaining the property, just like they would for a garbage disposal or something. Now unless the renter purposely damages it, that would be my guess, I can't tell you what a homeowner or renter are going to agree to, but that would be my guess of what the, the normal circumstances, the homeowner maintains it when the renter just, hey, my grinder pump went down, can you help me? So.
And grinder pumps are one size fits all?
They're bigger, the bigger you get. So you can have in sequence, so say, I'm just going to like Safeway wanted grinder pumps, we'd have to do more than just one small grinder pump, they'd only have a sequence of four to five grinder pumps.
And that's, that's where I wanted to go was, how's it going to affect our businesses that currently they pay according to inflow versus outflow?
Yeah. And the idea wouldn't be to convert businesses right away. Businesses have much larger step tanks too, like, you know, I just keep using Safeway, but any example of a large business, they might have two to three step tanks to handle their flow. Like, they don't even have, one step tank can't handle their flow, so you have, and grinder pumps are the same way, where you'd have multiple grinder pumps to handle. So. That, I mean, we focus a lot on the grinder pumps aspect of this, that was just one, that was just great. That's just one aspect of what this amendment covered. And we'll be bringing, so, and public service committee will hear about the grinder pumps a lot in the coming months because as a plant starts getting built and the headworks comes online, we'll get ready to do that switch over and authorize new construction to start building grinder pumps and then we'll start converting older failing step tanks to grinder pumps as well.
We're in here, I was looking for the, you mentioned the study of the flow to the channel.
Yeah.
Now.
So the new pumped outfall is that bottom one right here. So right now, we're in, they're doing a study trying to figure out, because our flow is supposed to be a certain amount on the outfall and it's about, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, we're roughly about a hundred gallons a minute less than we thought we'd be. I might be a little dead, but the number is less than it should be, it should be pumping more and it's not pumping enough. With our current growth rate, the outfall won't be able to push out enough water to the river to keep up with our growth in the next ten years. So we did that study now in preparation to, if we need to upgrade the outfall for this twenty-five year build out, let's do it instead of waiting five years and going, oh, correct, we're at our max limit, what do we do with all this water? And as you know, we do a lot of reclaimed water in town for watering purposes. The only problem is the school district has now converted a lot of their fields to turf and more, and they were our biggest users of reclaimed water. So we're kind of in excess of reclaimed water for amount of time that we just need to make sure we can get rid of properly. Part of that will be Cochrane Park upgrades, the other part will be making sure the outfall during those really cold times when no one needs water for irrigation, we have somewhere to put it. So the outfall is, if you don't know, is the canal and river, we outfall to the canal. Ninety percent of the time, we outfall to the river and that's what we put reclaimed water back into the outfall and river. The river will be doing, the canal shut down for maintenance during June, July timeframe for a couple weeks. So.
Yeah, that, that outfall pipe, by the way, is currently a gravity pipe, so we're analyzing that pipe to see if it can handle pressure flow because the amount of flow that we're going to be sending through that pipe is going to be greater. So we want to check that pipe out to see if it's able to handle pressure flow, not just gravity flow as it currently is.
You guys able to hear that?
If I remember correct, we pay to dump into the canal and river, correct?
We pay to dump into the canal.
Pay to dump into the canal.
Correct. Yearly amount.
Yearly amount, is that based upon a certain amount of flow? Like, we go over a certain amount?
It's just for the connection, they don't charge us per flow, they don't, we tell them how much we, we give them an average we use per year to that canal, but it's based on what they, they have a charge amount they do and it, it's, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, I can get it to you, but it goes up roughly a couple hundred bucks every year for that access to the canal. The river has always been a concern, emergency discharge, like, we're not supposed to discharge the river unless it's an emergency. In the coming or past couple of years, ecology has, and wildlife wanted us to actually put water to keep flows up in this, the river. So we've actually been asked to put water in the river during the low tide times to increase flow to help salmon. We don't put a lot of water in the river, but as we grow, we can have more to help those in-stream flows.
And you commented that as we grow as a city, we're going to be getting a lot more water that we have no storage for or anyplace to go, so a lot more is going to go into the canal and possibly into the river. Are we doing, is there a study or a way of getting it so that not just the new developments have purple lines, but some of the older developments can finally start getting purple lines out to them so that they can also irrigate their land at a cheaper price?
Yeah, a very good question. So we're actually working on, next year we're working on our sewer facilities plan, which will look at upgrading reclaimed lines in certain areas to allow flow to neighborhood, at least neighborhood pocket parks is a big one that we want to help out with because a lot of those parks are on irrigation and then maybe to individual users. And then also we have, if I'd mentioned it, was Cochrane Park, we're doing some massive upgrades, we have about fifty acre feet per year going to Cochrane Park, we're going to increase that capacity to three hundred acre feet per year, which will recharge our aquifer and will help also with water mitigation and water rates.
Sure, that same concern, councilmember Hess, expanding that purple pipe. It makes sense.
I think we should be looking at getting access to that to every house.
Yeah, that is.
Because at the end of the day, we're all the ones paying for water.
It's expensive, I mean, it's expensive every mile that we lay, it's really expensive, but. But yeah, we're definitely going to put that on the long-term plan, we are already working on that.
Yeah, you do have, and to just to echo Mayor Dependo, the biggest thing is there's certain stipulations about how close lines can be together. So it makes, to me as a person, before I came into this, I'd be like, oh, lay a water line, lay a reclaim line, a sewer line, go straight down. Well, they can be within a certain distance of each other because of contamination and seeping. So there, when we do, like, it would be great to just dig up a water line and lay a reclaim at the exact same time, you can't. And I, it's unfortunate, so we have to dig separate for the reclaim line, so it's not as easy as I want it to be. But the plan is to get it out there, it just may take a little longer because it'd be, we're doubling, we have to double our bases, we can't just dig one hole and hope and put all three pipes in it, so.
Speaking about that, like, are we getting it so that as we do road maintenance and various other things, that when there's that opportunity that we can dig the hole, even though it's dark, but we can still keep adding to it until we're able to get a complete connect to include, are we communicating with the state for the five-ten bypass of having them, when they continue the five-ten bypass, that that gets put in there so that when landscape gets put in, there's actually watering to, instead of depending upon nature to water it or somebody driving by?
Yeah, no, that's a good one, and a lot of, we do coordinate as much as we can with that kind of thing, so when we do like road and road, we have a reclaim line running there. Our hope is that when we do road and road, we can extend the reclaim line the other direction. So yes, we are totally on board with that.
We can, but there's also the funny.
Yeah, they're also limiting and what, and that is part of timing too, right? Because they don't want to slow, Wazas doesn't want to slow down its project, so if we go, hey, hold up, let's drop a reclaim line, they're going to be like, whoa, do you really want the bypass? So we do have that aspect too, where we really have to, it's hard to time them, but when we do our own road construction, we a hundred percent look at that kind of.
We're concerned about with our own road, that we're actually responsible for.
We, we definitely time those things. And with even road overlay, like we did for the Walmart, the AC main at Walmart, we relayed that whole road in timing with that pipe in.
Any other questions for move on to Pat?
Yeah, so that you'll see this next week on your council agenda to approve for the amendment to get all of these things done. Some of these have already been done, they've done them out of good faith that we would bring this amendment to you guys to get done, so. Okay, Pat, you're up.
Okay. The next, the next item on the agenda is regarding our twenty twenty-one water main program. I, I hope you can see it, I put a little map on the screen of what we're planning to do this year for our, our water main program. As you, as you may be able to see there, our, our work this year is concentrated in kind of three different areas. Over on the right side of the screen, you'll see that we're connecting our existing water system south of the canal along Wilkinson Road up to the north Yelm loop, there's a, there's a large area of water main that we own and maintain that's only tied together at one location. So this green line that you see will tie together, provide a second connection to that area. In that way, if there's a water main problem, we still can maintain flow to that area. It also provides better fire flow and just in general, better pressures for that area because it will, it, it's just something that needed to be done. I might preface this with that all these improvements that you're seeing on the map are all part of our water system plan, we're just implementing it a year at a time in accordance with the capital facilities plan that's in that water facilities plan. Over on the left side of the screen, you'll see some different colored pipes, they're near the downtown area. Most of these are continued replacement of the old asbestos cement main that we have downtown. This is kind of in the area just to the northwest of the middle school, along Solberg, Longmire, that, that general area on the north side of Yelm Avenue. And then the third general area is down along Mill Road, the orange lines, if you can see them there, where we're tying together some segments of main that currently do not connect. And farther down is extending the existing water main south to the, to the city limit to serve parcels that are down there. The little numbers that you see on here correspond with the water system plan capital improvement schedule. So you can see that all of these are pre-planned, we're just implementing it. So what I'm bringing to you is two contracts next week. One is for the construction of this, of this water main. It's with Pacific Civil and Infrastructure, they're out of Sumner, Washington. We took sealed competitive bids a few weeks ago, they were our apparent low bidder. And we have a contract ready to go with them, they're anxious to get started. In fact, they've already ordered the pipe for the project because the pipe prices are going up so quickly. The other contract I'll be bringing to you would be with Parametrics, who's our design engineer on this to provide the design, I'm sorry, the construction inspection services that goes with it. So these two, these two contracts will be coming your way next Tuesday. So if you had any questions on them, now is a great time to ask.
Council, any questions? Good? All right, thank you, Pat.
Okay.
All right. All right. Next thing we're going to be talking about is item number E, the applications for reviewing applications for the city council. And so at this point, we need to first determine how we were going to, timeline wise, how we're going to do it. As soon as council decides on timeline, which I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to suggest, I'll go ahead and just let you kind of talk about that, so go ahead.
I think we should bring him in next week.
And I also think we should set some time that we can talk, not on.
An executive session?
Yes, an executive session.
And I would like to see the candidates in person.
Okay.
Before the, on the podium.
On the other.
There are five candidates right now, or applicants, excuse me. All right, is everyone good with next week, having to come in, talking, and then, right, or councilmember Hess, excuse me?
I'd like to, going along with the timelines, if for January eleventh, we can do the interview, the meet, meeting them and everything. And then on the twenty-fifth, we go ahead and do the vote for them. That way, there's as brought up of getting an opportunity to meet them one-on-one or reach out to them if there's additional questions we want to ask after hearing questions from the council itself. I think that's plenty of time that allows us to have a full council when February comes into play.
Works for me.
What general consensus is, or?
Do we want to wait, I mean, I guess, I read over all the applications and I have a pretty good idea of just what I think. I'm, I was just thinking of kind of what they did last, I don't know, meeting them, asking questions, having an executive session. And if we can make a decision, make it, that was kind of my thought, but.
And use the next meeting as a layover in case?
Yes, in case, that, that was my thought, but.
In the past, it kind of has been done that way. I mean, this is your decision how to, how to run it. I know from my standpoint, I would like to get this done as quickly as possible for a few reasons. One being, thank you, one being the council retreat, I like to get that done sooner than later, the sooner we have this, the sooner, the sooner we have these two seats filled, the sooner we can go ahead and plan that. The other is committees. Right now, I'm covering all the committees, unless you have a committee that you've already been assigned to in the past. So continue doing those if you are, but for the council members that don't have committees, I'm, I'm attending those currently. As soon as we get the full list of committees, or excuse me, the full list of council members, we can go ahead and assign that and I will do that immediately. I've already been talking to each one of you about what your interests are and where, where you want to go, committees if you want to keep committees if you don't, things like that. I would suggest, I mean, and it's your call, but I, I do like that more aggressive timeline where we do have a week where, and you should all have the, the people, and I'll go ahead and read them.
Oh, if you, they don't have, wait, they don't have email yet?
I have email, it's, I'm, I'm on drop site, I mean.
Talk to the people, then you could do it this week.
Yeah. That's what I would suggest. Talk this week to them.
So he hasn't seen the applicant, so I understand.
I have not received anything. I am, as I asked, and I'm going to ask again.
Sure.
I have not done an onboarding. I haven't gotten in processing, whatever you want to call it. I don't have anything, no welcome packet, nothing. So I have shown up to this with, this is the only thing that I know what's going on. And in reference to using this week to meet for the next meeting, I will be honest, my job doesn't allow me to meet with anybody until. Next week because I'm, I'm on the road for, for my job.
And I don't think it would meet, it wouldn't, we wouldn't meet, we would do it on Tuesday, like we would take an, in my understanding. Take an executive session during the council meeting time as I.
But no, I can understand that, but when I said the, the opportunity to meet and communicate with them. Be nice to have some time to find out some other things. As I say, during the January eleventh, if. You know, I have my set of questions, everybody has their sets of questions, then also I hear something from somebody else and I'm kind of wanting. Okay, I kind of want to get a follow-up on that, but this isn't, the council's not the appropriate time to do that. I'd like to have some time to do that follow-up to go, oh, something didn't, either something didn't sound right or I want some clarity. And so to have that time afterwards and then be able to vote.
Sure. So let me first address it first and I apologize. Um, it's my second day in, um, actually in the office. Um, I apologize that. Information was communicated to you sooner and I'll take responsibility for that. I apologize. Um, and we'll get that, make sure that it is, you have all that information, you're on board and all that stuff. Um, is um, immediate. We'll start on that tomorrow or even maybe tonight, we can get that emails out. Um, but we'll get you all that information regarding the, um, the applicants. There's only one applicant that hasn't applied before or ran before. So everyone that is um, candidate, which um, going through is Keela Russell. Joseph Richardson, Lynn Roy, Stephen Bernie, and Scott May. Um, Scott May is the only applicant that hasn't went ahead and um, interviewed in front of the council. Um, hasn't, you know, campaigned in the, during the, um, in the past. So it's. We, we do know quite a bit of them, about them from the past. So perhaps Scott's the only one that, um, and I, I will do my best to work with you if, if we can't, um. To get, get ahold of them, to make sure that they're available for you, um, on their timeline. So if I can help facilitate that. Um, if we can just even five, five ten minutes for a phone call, um, to get you, you know, better understanding with them, we'll do that if. Apuses you. Thank you, council member. Yes.
Can we just, um, have our executive session and then have it sorted to vote, but if we need to, if I need more time.
Absolutely.
But I say, let's plan to vote on the eleventh unless we really need more time. The twenty-fifth, because I would like to get it done. And like I said, most of these people are familiar to us. So.
Yeah, is that good with council in that timeline? Next week, we'll go ahead and um, do the interviews in person. And of course, I'll go ahead and um, have the staff um, communicate this and we'll work on, on language and all that. But a step by step on what to expect from them. Um, and so they, they at least know in a week in advance to um, to be there in person. To have some prepared and whatnot. And then we'll schedule an executive session for the end of the um, council meeting next week. And then you can discuss and uh, or see, we'll have an executive session during the meetings, um, where it's appropriate. Um, discuss and come back out, either vote. And if we're not ready to vote, then we can take the next meeting to go ahead and uh, vote.
I'll say after reviewing them, this is for myself only. The majority of them we've already heard from, I, and I don't like appointing people at all. I will say that I already have a pretty good idea of who I would, I guess nominate out of those five. And. Beyond that, um, in the future, like if someone is applying for an open seat or something, I would. When I came into it, like when I first ran, or when you all first ran, but you're all into it. You, you made your case one hundred percent above and beyond what you would expect people and try, try to make your case of why you want to be on here. And the individual, I don't know them. I've got an application, there's one, one word responses. It doesn't really show me that they have that much. I don't know what the word is I'm looking for. Drive behind it, more of just kind of like, I'm just gonna throw my name in and. To me, I got, if, if, if I'm ever gonna vote on someone as an appointment, I have to know they're, they're in it. They're, they a hundred percent want to be a part of it and want, want, want to do something good with it. So. That's where I'm at. I think you guys can kind of figure that out. And out of, out of the others. I've already, I guess, I don't want to do an appointment, but out of those, I've, I've got a pretty good idea of, because we already heard from all of them.
Except for the woman. I mean, I think we all do probably have an idea.
So I don't think it's gonna need multiple meetings.
Are we voting out loud again?
Yeah, and I mean, that's your choice, but especially with um, five people in the council right now. It, it's easier because there's not three-three where usually it is. So there won't be, there shouldn't be a tie. We won't go down those roads, but um, hopefully it will be, um, you'll have a easy choice to make, an easy choice to make, but um, a decisive choice to make. And we'll move on from that. But yeah, I imagine you just, um, someone would nominate, second vote. And then if they have the, a majority vote, they would become a council member.
I would, next meeting, like I said, invite them all in. And ask them all questions. clarify questions after that, if. We all have the opportunity, we can reach out to people ahead of time, their emails, phone numbers or on their applications. Talk to them there, have, have the executive session scheduled to where we can all discuss it, come back in. And at that point, if we're ready to, to nominate, vote on someone, or the two people, then we do it. If not, then yeah, we push it off and take another week to deliver it. I don't think it needs to be forced to have a vote that day, but.
Sounds good. Everyone grants? All right. We'll go ahead and get that set up. Um, we're good on that timeline? Wow, we're getting through this pretty darn fast. How about the mayor's report? So it's been a busy uh, first two days. You know, it's kind of like drinking water from a fire hose and it really is, it's just so much. We've, I've been here. From eight AM to five PM, you know, today I was a little bit later, a little bit later, but um. I think nine, nine PM we got in, so it took a little bit hour, but those are my hours though. I'm, I'm here usually from eight to five, not longer. I'm here for the staff, I'm here um, to help any needs and we've been going through meetings like crazy. It's just been non-stop meeting after meeting after meeting and it, it's good. I've been really enjoying it. Um, it's, it's, it's amazing. So I, I'm really thrilled to help lead the city here. Um, we started off with a few, well, I'll start off with the meetings. I'm trying to meet with every single employee. It's important for me to um, to understand how every, uh, every single employee here in the city of Yelm feels, how they feel about their work environment. Um, everything, what they're thinking is going right, what's going wrong, if it's going well. Um, met, met with about a quarter of them so far and try to meet the rest of them this week. Meetings have been going great. Uh, met with their attorney, talked, discussed about different, um, you know, the legalities are different things. So, so I, so I don't get the city in trouble or anything. But I mean, liability, what we can do, what we can't do. Um, we're gonna push the envelope, envelope a little bit where we can't. And it's been good. The, uh, one of the more important things that we've been discussing is um. We're involved in negotiations right now with a multiple unions and particularly right now is the Teamsters Union. Um, second day was today and we, we went into it for about what, three, three, four hours or so?
At least.
Yeah, and uh, we made a lot of progress. We're doing good. And of course, this is all with the council parameters. Um, we will have, um, part of this executive session will, um, part, we'll talk, discuss a little bit further about what, what happened. Um, we're getting really close though. I, I think that, I say real close, this is only the first day. Yeah, go ahead.
When the, um, what jobs the Teamsters?
What jobs, uh, public work or public services? Is there anything particular that?
Uh, parks, street, it's all the infrastructure, park, streets, water, sewer.
And yeah, it's, it's been interesting. I'm enjoying this part of it. Um, and we're so close too. I, I think that. Maybe tomorrow is the day, we have one more meeting tomorrow and it, uh, we've been going back and forth all today. And it looks like tomorrow that we should have an agreement, everything works out well. Um, but yeah, it's very close and of course we'll report. And of course, we're doing it through parameters that we've already set, the council has set. So that's important to know. Um, and council morass, you have, you weren't involved those executive sessions, but we will get you up to speed at our next executive session or just a one-on-one I can do with you as well. We're working on trainings. Something that's important that we do is standardize our trainings here at city hall. And I'm talking about like active shooter trainings, talk about sexual harassment trainings, things to that nature. Sometimes we've done it in the past. It's, it's not a standard thing though. It's usually when uh, employees first hired. And we're going to make this an annual thing. It's very standard at the state level, the federal level. They just do this annually. And it just keeps ingrained in our heads to um, just have a safe work environment and uh, um, for legal reasons as well, cover us. Uh, working on a warming center, you know, there's been instances lately where. You know, it, it's been, it's been cold and there's been um, times when there's been fires starting for people trying to stay warm and. You know, I think there's a lot of times that we can help mitigate some of that, um, and get them in a warming center. Which we have been talking to our attorney to see what um, legally we can do, what, um, what liability the city holds on opening. Um, a community center, which is what we're discussing right now. So. Love Abounds is a part of the homeless and staff force and part of the, um. Early groups trying to create a solution for those that are in extreme weather conditions, when it's below freezing. To open up the um, community center where you would um, just have it open for just. Permanent thing, but just temporarily for the extreme cold, open it up for them to warm up during the, not freeze stuff.
All right. I thought we used the public safety building for that.
We have used that in the past, yes.
Do you want to just change the venue?
Yeah, and if, do you want to kind of talk to some of the issues? Yeah.
Okay, so um, the issue with using the PD as a warming center. Is technically it's not, that area is not open to the public. So we would have to have an officer or employee open it and be there with them, which puts tremendous liability on the city. Um, because technically we don't operate warming centers or shelters because of that. So the idea, uh, again, when it got really cold last week, we were contacted. Um, typically you'll find churches periodically that will step up and open their doors and allow people and we didn't really see much of that. Uh, anywhere, not just here, all over Thurston County. There was very few warming centers opened up. So we um, spoke through AWC, which our insurance representative. And got some feedback on what it would look like if we were to temporarily, uh, for a few hours at night, open warming centers. Um, in a, in a city building. And so they're the ones that recommended a, you know, a basically a contract and agreement, a hold harmless liability type. Uh, agreement. So that's kind of where we are right now, is we've got kind of a draft agreement put together. Um, so if Love Abounds or anyone else wanted to volunteer to staff that, it would be them staffing it. They would have a, uh, an insurance waiver as well, uh, as to not put themselves or the city in any sort of liability. So really it's just an option. There's not a lot of options for warming centers. There's lots for uh, cooling centers. Because that's during the day. Uh, then the warming centers, obviously it's a challenge because it's coldest in the middle of the night when most businesses are closed. So.
I wanted to, you said that there weren't that many open in the county. I know that there's a lot of organizations that are helping, that are working with the homeless issues. Did we reach out to them to find out why churches weren't opening up or anything else like that? Is it because of the current pandemic situation or is it something else?
It was both. Um, the pandemic is definitely part of the concern. Uh, secondly was uh, the weather got so bad so quick. That they couldn't get people to drive to these locations to open them up. So the volunteers that normally would go and, you know, staff these, they couldn't get there. And so that was part of the, that was part of it. And so typically they will list ten to twelve warming centers. Uh, you know, uh, they, they do expand shelter capacity throughout Thurston County when they do a code blue. Uh, which they did. They expanded to shelter capacity, but be clear, we're not asking to be this a shelter, right? This is a, shelters are a whole different level of, of commitment. And this is literally just a place where if someone's freezing to death. They could go in, stay warm for the overnight hours, very limited hours, and then they would, they would move on. So.
And I don't mean this to sound to anyone. I almost feel like it needs to be limited to people that we know in the area. Uh, obviously we're aware of who the homeless people are in Yelm, but I don't want to see attracting other people from outside the area. To increase the issue here. And whoever's watching that and is gonna take those words out of context. I've done my part of trying to help people of, and I will continue to do it. However, at the end of the day. Someone has to be willing to help themselves to get out of the situation. I am all for helping someone. I'm all for if people are cold, letting them come in. But I'm not about seeing a situation like Seattle, Libya, coma, or anywhere else happening here. So how is, is that even possible? For one, how could we go about making sure that that is, I want, I want to take care of our people. I don't want to bring more of an issue here.
Well, for, for one, just to kind of respond to that directly, um, other cities and the county as well are also doing similar, um, actions, opening similar, um. Warming centers as well. So it, it's not just, I mean, this isn't just a, a novel idea that we're.
I understand, just, but yeah, that's.
Well received though, understood.
And it's only because of observing what happens within our community as a whole on a regular basis. And I, I'm happy with that we're going to be opening up the community center if necessary. Can we also, have we reached out to the various churches and everything that have provided the meals? And I mean, they advertise these things. Have we reached out to them to find out a way that we can coordinate with them to assist them on. Find out what they need to be able to open up. If it's a, hey, we just need to, we just need volunteers that maybe we can help them find other volunteers. Or help them, you know, get the message out in some way, utilizing resources that are already here that are used on a regular nightly basis. In essence.
So typically what happens is Thurston County Emergency Management maintains a, a list of contacts. Uh, for anyone that has ever opened up a shelter, whether it's a warming center, cooling center, whatever. Um, and so what they did last week is they shot out this group email to all these locations that would typically operate warming centers. And had, I think, to respond. Um, and, and again, maybe that was because of traffic, maybe because it was COVID, we, we don't know. But that's really when the conversation went to, maybe there's something, maybe there's something else we could do. If none of these other places.
And, and I appreciate that we're doing that. I just wanted to.
No, absolutely, yeah.
And we are in direct contact with these nonprofits and we don't anticipate that, like hundreds or even more than a handful of people.
No, I, I understand it's just a handful. It's, I just wanted to make sure that we have available, uh, that we are working on a way of, you know. Being a, utilizing resources that are out there and working with them. That if, that if there's a church that says, hey, we can't get somebody there. Then maybe we can find a way to help provide somebody there until one of their volunteers, you know, it's that kind of.
Absolutely.
And our churches do do a lot.
Oh, no, and they do.
Clothing, um, you know, they do, they, they do quite a bit.
Right, and I appreciate that about our churches here in Yelm. And as I said, I, I've seen them talk about those things. I just didn't see them. I didn't see anything about the warming center that they were opening up. And so that's why when bringing this up, I just.
It was unique, yeah. This was unique and that's what led us to having these conversations to find out what we would need to do as a city legally. Be able to even offer something like this to a group that would.
And, and I, I appreciate that we're taking that, uh, we're taking that step forward and being.
James, just to, on top of that, when we did open the PD for a warming center that, a, a few years ago, um, the most we ever had in there was one. Um, and it was the one what we know, you know, was one of our, our local that we check on. And so one of the things we did during this uh, cold spell is the officers would, would contact anyone they seen that they know. Or even go to the locations where their camps are set up and offer them, you know, help or, or offer to get them to a shelter or. Or even go to the locations where their camps are set up and offer them, you know, help or, or offer to get them to a shelter or. You know, that type of thing, and so um the, the, the unique thing about Yale is. A majority of our, our routine homeless folks, we talk to frequently, the officers talk to frequently. For the most part, they give, they give us very little problem, they don't want problem, right, most of them wanna be where they are. Uh most of them know where to get help, they really don't want help, if they want help, they know where to go to get it. Um so that's what I'll say about that.
That's honestly, a lot of people need to hear that because that is a fact that is ignored.
Alright, moving on, anything else? Alright, moving on, excuse me. Moving on um. Our third meeting of this month, um our second council meeting. Will be with the Miss Quolly tribe, we're gonna be a joint meeting over there. Excuse me, we'll be doing a joint meeting over there um in their councils, their council chambers and um. We've already started off with a great relationship with them and we're gonna build on that, so that's gonna be a huge thing, we'll do that in person over there. That is the second meeting on the. Thank you.
So the twenty fifth will be holding a meeting. Their chambers?
Correct, yep. You know, give you information, you know, when that date gets a little bit closer, but basically they've in the past. I, I think it's only been once and I'm looking for who's ever been on here tonight, maybe.
I'll say, I, I would love that opportunity, but if it's anything like how. Reservation properties currently operate, I will, I'm gonna assume I'd probably have to do remote on that one.
Perhaps, um but we'll work on the logistics of it and I'll get back to you on how that's gonna look like. So we'll, we'll be meeting with them shortly and we'll be discussing all those different details.
Uh why?
Why?
Yeah.
Um to improve relationships, um just basically to let them know that we're committed to being their partner on different items. There's a. I won't go into detail right now, a, a lot of those items, we'll discuss a few of them at that time, but there's gonna be some joint partnerships that we're gonna be doing uh with them. It's gonna be beneficial to both parties, um we're gonna be um utilize, well. There's items that are gonna be um saving us money, that's gonna um, gonna benefit them, there's gonna be some economic development projects that we're gonna be working on. Just suggesting to work on with them.
I'm all, I'm all for it, like I said, just as much as I would love to, as I would love to be there.
Yeah.
If it's anything like.
Whether it be, so well, my, my question asking.
Yeah.
Doing a joint, not that I'm against it, yeah, that's great, but at a Yale city council meeting and we have city business to conduct.
How's it gonna look?
They have business they have to conduct and then are we just, like, how does that work, like, if we push our vote out? Another week, are we gonna be doing it that there?
Yeah, so we'll be.
How's that gonna work?
Just like a normal council meeting, um so we'll go through ours, they'll go through theirs, um we'll probably do theirs first and then set ours um afterwards. I, I don't know exactly which, uh we haven't decided, you know, who's going first and who's going second, all that, but part of one of ours will have joint um. Items on there that we'll both be discussing, they're relevant to both of us, uh like partnerships that we're gonna be discussing. Um but it should be, it shouldn't be too big of a, I mean, we, we've been developing the different um. The different agendas already, we're starting to look at, you know, down the road, what we can plan on it and it's something that, you know, we can fit in. It's not gonna be like a super, super long meeting, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, in my time, we did that once at the community center, sort of our side and their side. And it was actually fascinating, was really interesting, really good, I really enjoyed it, so.
Yeah.
I'd love to.
It's interesting to see how other folks um run their meetings to uh do their business and now. They're, they're, they're a big tribe and they're a very um powerful influential um partner for us in terms of um. Like we, we, we do a lot of grants for them, they do a lot of public safety grants for us. Um it's, it's been a good partnership and we wanna enhance it and, you know, if we can expand on it.
Like you said, I just wanna lengthwise, like why wouldn't we just have a separate meeting where we're teaming up instead of at a city business meeting?
Yeah.
So we can keep things separate of.
Yeah, no, it'll be like.
So yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what's coming up on the agenda for the twenty fifth, so yeah, I don't wanna five hour long meeting.
Well, it'll probably be like a seven or eight hour meeting, but no, I'm just kidding, we'll, we'll. An all day thing, yeah. Uh but yeah, it, it'll be a good time, so trust me on that one, we'll give more details out as closer we get to it though. Um something that's been important, and I'm sorry it's a long one, I, I promise I won't do a bunch of long ones, but there's just been a lot going on. Um right away, so even in these just first two days, um something that we've been discussing. Kind of the management team has been employee recognition, we want morale to increase here, we wanna improve it and wanna let employees know that, you know, what they do. Is very important and it's very important for the, the folks of Yale, the people of Yale and we've been working on different um, different things to recognize them. And also to better train them as well, um to serve the people of Yale even better, and one of them is an employee recognition. Um public worker, I always wanna call it public works, but public services, um they already currently do this, they do an employee of the month. You're sure you're all familiar with that kind of program, we're gonna be implementing that for the whole city now, um on a quarterly basis. Government heads are gonna recommend certain um employees for achievements they've been doing and then the management team will go ahead and select a um. Um an employee of the month or the quarter and then they'll get a little plaque, a little lunch or some. Some little prize, some, something nice and uh then we'll, from that list, we'll go up the employee of the quarter and. Or excuse me, uh employee of the year and we'll recognize them and um yeah, just recognizing some, some of our best employees here. Uh for the city of Yale. Lastly, we're gonna upgrade this camera system, the sound system, we're gonna talk about that a little bit and uh. The people, folks in I T are doing great things for us, but we're gonna improve upon it, they've already, they're on board, so. We're gonna improve on that, um of course it'll be within budget and all that stuff, our, our current budget. So that's all I've got, just that, and at this point, we go on to council member initiatives. So and some, some I've talked to you about different things you wanna do and now is a good time to, if you wanna talk about some of your um. Action items that you wanna see done here in the city, you can go ahead and do that now, you don't have to, uh you don't have to if you don't want to, this is your first meeting, so. It's up to you, but council member Blair, let's start with you.
I'm gonna bring it up.
What are you gonna bring up?
Here it is.
So. We, we're not deciding anything today, but something I brought up to Mayor DePinto, brought it up to these guys also. Is changing the dynamic of these study sessions. And honestly, former council member Wood brought it up. Going to more of the style of, we're sitting around, maybe we do dinner, maybe do whatever. But it's more of a longer meeting and it's really us hashing stuff out. Not, that's, that's, that, that, those will be the times where we're really digging in. Instead of during the council meetings, where I'm, I'll go, I'll ask question after question after question because. I may know the answers, but everyone else doesn't, or I may have not got enough info in the study session. So I gotta ask it then and it draws it out. Honestly, these study sessions should be the time when we're, we're really getting to the nuts and bolts and tearing into what's going on and figuring it out. And having those spirited discussions. To figure, figure out where, where we're going and, and what, what it is we wanna do. Maybe this format has worked for the last few years that it's been going on, but I. I truly believe that that's, that's something we should think about and, and, and change.
You mean, so when we get to the council meeting, we're just simply making motions and voting? That part is shorter, is that what you mean, or do you want?
Basically.
Informal.
Yes.
Study sessions.
Both.
Okay.
Both.
Yeah.
I feel, I feel like when we get to the council meetings, for the most part, we should all. Basically know what's going on, not necessarily how we're gonna vote on something or how everyone's going to vote on something, but. As questions that you may have had about whatever is on the, the agenda, for the most part, we've already. Dug through it all. And maybe that means we need to add another study session in between the two meetings. Possibly. Because it kinda doesn't make a whole lot of, when we have two council meetings, there's different agenda meet, agenda items on all those. So unless, unless, unless the agenda items are figured out that far ahead, then we, and we're talking like. This study session today. If we're only gonna have one study session a month, we should also know what's coming up on that next agenda at the end of the month. So we can start figuring that out and talking about it now. I mean, that or add a second study session in between those two. Uh we all got a raise. So we got paid for it. It was six hundred, now it's eight hundred, or whatever the heck it was.
Paul, that was a salary commission, they determined that.
Yeah, so I, what I mean, I mean, really that's.
I brought up the same thing when I came in, before the meeting, I, the study sessions I would like to see changed, so I'm on, I'm on board.
I, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're proposing here is that. The study session, like this week's study session is talking about what's on the agenda for next week, so that, or the next meeting coming up January eleventh. So then during that meeting, we don't have to ask questions.
Not, obviously, we can all ask questions.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand is, whatever's coming up for January eleventh should have been on today's study session agenda and then for. Uh let's see, the eighteenth, if we're doing this, uh we'll be doing a study session on the eighteenth is what's coming up on the twenty fifth.
Yes. If, if we were to do, like if we were to change it up, and do two study sessions a month. Which honestly, as, as this city grows and there's more stuff that we need to handle, it's gonna get to that point. But if we were gonna, if we were gonna stick to one, my thought is. Whatever is gonna be the, on, on the agenda for the two council meetings that month needs to be talked about during this study session. So it's either we have one really long one, or we got two, but I, I really think we need to change up the style that we've done for the last, at least for me the last couple of years. Is during that study session, we need to be digging down and really getting into what's going on, asking all the questions that we have. And if there's disagreements, let's figure them out during that time.
And it's important, especially for the new people and myself included, to really dig through the notes and all the documentation that is offered to us. Cause many times we're asking questions that are in those notes and if we would have studied them cl- more clearly.
I'll be a hundred percent honest.
It would be helpful.
And just directly in, involved with that, I would be a hundred percent honest, when I get a two hundred page document, I'm telling you right now, I'm not reading both or.
Yeah. I wish there was a summary, a summary of important.
Alright. Walked across from each other and all that, it, it, it wasn't in this formal setting.
Um yeah, Councilor Crossman, do you have any input on it? Any thoughts?
Oh, I see both sides of me. Yeah, it's nice being transparent to the public about everything, but there's some things we. There's some issues, I mean, there's a lot of money going through here that, you know, if you heard me already on these council meetings, I'm. In my short time, I'm just like, I don't like seeing all this money falling through, you know, that's, that's my hard earned dollars. And, but sometimes you gotta say stuff where you don't have the public scrutinizing every little thing you said, because you know, it's communications discussion. And I'm not super formal, I say things that I probably shouldn't from time to time, I'm like, oh yeah, I shouldn't have said that. As whereas a more informal uh discussion would make that a lot easier. To do and hammer out some of these issues and get some information, so we'd make better decisions. Um you know, and still being small as we are, we're still young, you know, a group here, so I think we could still get away with it. You know, and still be good with it. Um so yeah, I'll be for it. You know, I'm like, I'm not really opposed either way, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay, Councilor Hesse. My one concern is getting pub, is, is opening that, that transparency and getting that public trust and involvement. That they don't get to communicate within our study session, and I have no qualms of doing a study session where we are grilling. Cody and everybody else, you know, get and drilling into them. I just wanna make sure that it's still open to the public to watch and observe, but that when we come to the meeting, that we're going to do the vote. We don't shortchange the public of not giving them that opportunity to stand in front of us and start going, hey, what you said last week. I disagree with, or that we are checking, um getting public input either through the emails, them reaching out to us. And communicating with us of, hey, I heard what you had to say, but that was, you don't, you're not, you don't understand where it's coming from on our part. Or if we happen to talk about something that somebody comes in with, that they actually have some knowledge on that, they add to it. We need to make sure that, you know, we, we're, we have that communication, that trust, that, that working hand in hand, cause yes, we are still small, but. I also know that we are ten thousand residents, we're no longer the one horse town, the one stop light, the one stop sign, a yield sign, whatever it may be. We need to start doing things that. All in line with what Lacey, Olympia, Ton Water, Tacoma, we need to start setting ourselves up, we are no longer children. Community wise, we're reaching that teenage young adult, and so we need to start putting things in place that as we continue to grow. We develop to become even a better and more efficient uh community uh leadership.
Uh we're gonna go council member Blair Crossman and then Kaminsky, so in order.
On, on that point, uh study sessions are always open, anyone can come in and prior to me being on here is when there was still. In a round table setting, not in here, and if there was someone that came in like I did. More, I was never told I couldn't talk to anyone or ask questions. Uh in fact, I remember. The, there was a study session where it was, it was a discussion during, about rates. I believe you were on council and I grilled him, I asked probably ten, fifteen different questions during that meeting. Uh I would love for more people to be doing that. So they're always open, like it wouldn't be an executive session to style thing.
I, I, I didn't mean that.
I know, I'm just.
I just meant that.
And then like moving on to when the actual meetings come, by no means do I mean like, hey, let's make it to where we're rushing through those, no, like. We should absolutely, everyone should still have the opportunity to come up here and if they're unhappy with anything we've done or said, yell at us about it.
I'd say like, most of these things that we vote for are discussed in private. You know, we have no, you know, very little public info on that, so it's always, you know, a lot of that stuff, you know, like. These bills that come through amendments, so man, you got that aspect, but yeah, again, back kind of what um Blair's saying about. It's being open and public, they can come in and, and hang out and watch and, but we know how people are, they don't, there's no public here, there's very. You know, I've been watching council meetings for almost a year now and there's very little of the public, you hear a lot of complaints. But you don't see people, cause it takes effort, you know, like, I mean, kinda like me, you know, I vote for my state representatives. I just don't do the thing and I just trust that it all works out. You know, so I, you know, I feel a lot, most people are probably like that, they elected us, take care of this stuff. I trust you because I voted for you for whatever reason, I feel you're gonna represent me well. And, you know, but yeah, if they wanna come in, hey, come watch us, but this, this make it a little more informal. And not videotaping on T V and people just sit back in the peanut gallery. No, come down here, be here seated if you wanna have some input, if you don't like the way something's done or you do like the ways, be here. And get involved.
Councilor Kaminsky.
I know we have to be taped and the public is open and invited, but I would just like Polly's saying, I want it to feel and look like a different session. I don't wanna be sitting at this table like a, like as if it's a council meeting, even if it's in this room. And we have a round table in the middle of the floor and we're all sitting looking at each other and bringing a coffee and a cookie and talking, talking, talking. Be taped and listened to, I want it to be more informal and don't put up your hand, just talk, just, just, just make it more informal. That's what I think would differentiate the meetings.
Councilmember Smith?
Does the study session, if it's, it's open to the public, does it have to be, also be live streamed, does it have to be?
No, it doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be?
No, there's, there's, so there's certain. So there are certain laws and um regulations regarding Open Meetings Act, it's called Open Meetings Act. Um it does have to be recorded, um so if the public does wanna go ahead and um listen in to what we have. They, they have that opportunity to get that. You know, it's, and just for councils. How, how I'm gonna run this meeting here is on study sessions, I'm gonna engage with y'all, I'm, you know, it's your meeting and all that, but it's also a more informal. Um time where I can also engage. Um, time where I can also engage, for city council meetings, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make my input, I'm not gonna, this is, that's all you. So I'm gonna chair it, but, um, I'm not gonna say, well, I don't know, I kinda like this way. Um, it's, it's your call, and for better for worse, it's your decision, so, um, with this though, I, you know, it's. What, I, I hear what you're saying, it, it's two, two big, um, two areas where if. We may lose transparency and ease of access for folks to, to watch these, they have to come in, but we also might gain, um, more of a.
Quality of conversation.
Quality, more openness between the council members and the mayor. So, there, there is trade offs on it. My suggestion would be during the, um, council retreat, after we have our full council. To, and this is gonna happen, it's not like somewhere gonna kick the can down, we're gonna, we're actually gonna have the city council retreat. Um, when we have the other two council members as well, we'll go ahead and discuss this at the retreat. And we'll come back, um, united, however, you know, better for worse, we'll support, um, each other on this, and we'll move forward with that. And if that's what council wants, that's what people elected you to do, to make these decisions, they trust your judgment. Like Councilmember Crossman was saying, you know, when they vote for you, that they're voting for your best judgment. So if you think in your best judgment that closing this down for whatever reason is the best way to do it. That's, that's what we're gonna be doing.
So if we go to a different location, and we just have to be taped, will we, does someone bring a tape recorder, or how does?
There's a few different options.
Options that are portable. I thought we had to be.
Now, we'll chat with staff and we'll chat with our legal department as well to make sure that we're all good. But, um, we'll bring back some options to you though as well, but yeah, I think this is a great topic, um, good conversation. Yeah, let's chat about it more in the, um, council retreat, and we'll go on with that. Fair? Anything else? Councilmember Blair?
Nope, next.
So I made a list.
Okay.
Some of my ideas and things I like to see and kick around and, you know, talk about. And, um, some things I'm for, and it may be popular, it may not. So let's run them down real quick, just to highlight, um, I think we should sell the LID once that's done, squared away, that's six hundred and forty acres. I don't think the city needs it, it's not ours, so find developer, dump it, get rid of it. Um, for, I've scuttled the EDC project, I know it's one of the big five things in the city. I have not been impressed.
What?
Is it called EDC? The building down here?
Oh, EIC, I think is what I mean.
Yeah, I see, sorry. Yes, sorry. Got my initials mixed up here.
Oh no, not the EDC.
That, that project there, um, I just have not been impressed with what's come through on that. Um, I'll just hit all these and then if you guys want to time in. We keep a lot of housing, I'm wondering about all the infrastructure that's come with all the housing we got coming in. Police, fire, you know, sanitation, water, of course. And more importantly, jobs in transportation. You know, I see some of the other areas, you know, like Olympia and Lacey, how they had a lot of infrastructure in place before a lot of. You know, I'm in building and development, and so you see a lot of infrastructure going in, in some places, they put a lot of infra- infrastructure in place. Then they add all the housing, seems like Yellma's been adding a ton of housing. I'm concerned about some of the infrastructure and some of the things to go along with that. Make sure that's all covered. And with that, you know, we house a lot of the base. You know, there's J Blam pulling their part, pulling their weight, we're bringing all this. Stress upon us as a city for housing, and how can we partner? About jobs, how can we partner with the chamber, et cetera, to grow our employment force within the city limits? So we can get sales tax revenue, most importantly, and get people working closer to home, which benefits everybody. And last question that I had, wasn't sure, do we pay the, anything into the bus system? Do we support that financially? Okay, then that doesn't matter then.
Yeah, they only, they're only, they have their own taxing jurisdiction.
There we go, shoot.
Your second one, um, I've been on that, so from the get go.
Which one?
EIC, right.
This, um, I don't know where you guys are at, but I would love to see something in the next meeting. That, that's under the capital improvement pro- plan.
So, the EIC is, um, is a grant that was applied for last year, we got a grant to do a study to see if it was. Feasible or useful to build something on that other section of property. Um, that grant money, we have, we're spending it, um, actively. Uh, that's two hundred thousand dollars, we spent around fifty three thousand two hundred and forty bucks at my last look. Um, I don't know if that number's right, it is, um, so. But we, so we spent about, about one fourth of that money to do this study, the full plan gets us a, almost a design for it. Like, actually you could build off of those plans, so that's where we had been going, if, you know, council, we're gonna present council our current findings, we just did a. Open house and a bunch of surveys, we'll be bringing those to council in the next month, so you'll see that, I. Not imploring you to do anything, but I think it would be wise for you to look at least what people are saying. We had a lot of public input, more than we've had in a lot of things, about two hundred people responded, which is huge. To get that, a local residents that kinda say what they wanna see and what they desire, and I think based on that information, you guys can make a very educated decision on what we should do. With this project, if it should go forward or should create it, I think just hearing that would probably help you guys make a better decision. Going off that real fast, I was also disappointed in the lack of transparency, the lack of engagement with the council, um, from previous administration. I, I'm not a fan of that either, so, I, I, I'm with you, uh, let's hear what's, uh, we already spent the money. Let's hear what, you know, the results are, and make that decision after that.
You might have, uh. I'm all for hearing about what people were saying, uh, I'm all for hearing what, what the study produced. Uh, I would, me personally, I would like to see the spending on this stopped, for now.
It will stop, yeah.
And I'm sure there's a lot of great ideas to come of what could go there. And maybe one day it, it might be a great idea. But right now, I think we got a whole laundry list of things. That take priority long before building some thing here. What, what timeline do you think before this city hall would need to be expanded?
Can't, can't tell you that, um, I think there's, and I can, can't speak for, um, city administrator Stansel or Mayor Pino. But there's other options we can do to move people around to allow the city hall to last a long time, we have a lot of space in other areas that we could bring people to, so I think. That is something I, and I, but I agree with you that, you know, there are priorities on the list, I do want to make sure that you know, you know, we. We are capable of, I'm a very good multitasker, so I can build a WRF and a building somewhere else, I can do that, um. So I don't want that to be a reason that you think that, you know, it's a lower on the priority list, but I agree with you that you guys should look at the information there are. It's totally on your purview, if you wanna cancel it and drop it, that is totally on you, we have spent some money.
Honestly, what I would love to see from this city is to break the cycle. Every other city, and even this country, state and everything does, and that's operate off of debt. How can we get, how can we totally pay everything off, and start operating off of cash?
I don't think we're paying off, or running off debt, these are funded projects.
If we were to build a building right here, it's dead. We're taking a loan to build it.
Yeah, most likely on that one, yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
How can, I mean, maybe it's way out of even possibility with the way the world operates now, but. Can we get there?
That's the bigger question for the Young City Council, but, uh, you're talking about state funding, you're talking about county funding, you're talking.
I just, I would, I would love to see us as a city, start not doing things based off of debt more. As trying to get more things paid down, I mean, obvious, there's gonna be, be things come up where we have to take home loans.
I mean, I'd love to have twenty million dollars to, to mess around with in our budget, but, I mean. But thi- this is a conversation that's a lot more philosophical, um, but to your point, um, Councilmember Crossman regarding that, that building and the funding on that. Um, right now, we aren't gonna be spending any more money, um.
Tell the report, you tell us, see the report, that, that's the next step, they'll present the report.
Council will have a decision to make at that point, and it's your, if you wanna stop it, I mean. I, from what I can do in my authority, we're, we're not spending any more money on it, if council wants to choose to continue it, or to not defund it, to fund it. That's your call, and I will respect it.
Is that building not part of the downtown corridor plant, which is this huge overall sweeping futuristic projects for the future?
It wouldn't scuttle the whole, no, it would just be that project, it wouldn't scuttle.
From the downtown corridor plant?
You will have your, your planners, you'll have your archway, all this. Councilmember Hess.
I understand that you wanna scuttle it, and, and all, and, but please, keep an open mind for what the report that he, that, uh. Cody's working on, please keep an open mind, because, um. Some of the things I've heard about this EIC, it could be a benefit for Yellma. In the sense of what it could bring to Yellma, that we have to slightly invest in. In a way, it could help our community grow, it could help provide something for our community that, yes, we have to go into debt for. According to state laws and a lot of other laws that are out there, we can't keep pushing money into a savings account until we get a hundred million dollars. To be able to build a project, that's against the law, it doesn't work that way, we can't do that. We are only allowed so much excess cash available in our general fund and as a reserve. And so when we're looking at how we're spending, we're spending, if we are fiscally responsible. We set things up of going, okay, we know that we're gonna have a twenty year mortgage on a building. It's built within our budget, and we have the revenue coming in, and we do it correctly. But we all, but all I ask is, please keep an open mind on this EIC, because as I said, there are some things I've heard in reference to this that. Could be a benefit for our community that will really bring our community to shine a little bit better within Thurston County. And help us out as one of the fastest growing communities of Thurston County, as well as one of the, you, you know, it's just the way we are, the way things are.
I don't think anyone's arguing that there's not bad, there, there's a lot of good projects it would bring, um, it would come along with that. But I think the argument is made, and feel free to correct it if I'm wrong, it's a cost of it, that, um, you know, it's that, that trade off. That's your, and that'll be your call to make, um, so.
Next month, you said, probably?
Oh, yeah, I can. Totally, okay, so we, we have, um, the survey report, we were just kinda compiling everything to give it to an easier readable format instead of a. Able to look at it, maybe options, and yeah.
Send it out to you and we can do a presentation.
Maybe it's the best thing in the world, maybe it's gonna cost nothing, so we'll, we'll find out.
And I know part of that was originally, what, what I remember hearing about, what part of it was for like a satellite campus for. For SPS.
Different parts, yeah, that was one.
Part of the, I'm, I'm curious, part of that study, I mean, i- if, if SPSU was to be in here, are they helping build it?
So imagine, uh, there'd be rooms to rent, that we would rent out somewhere to the community center that people would rent, SPSU could be one of those rooms. To rent, yes, so they would, it would help, they would help. They're not gonna help fund the capital.
That there, like, for me, um, if it's a college that's moving in somewhere, you're gonna be there a while, why would you not have any type of ownership?
That would, that's a very good thing, we, and I think that's something we could totally talk about.
The ownership of the building. I wanna share that ownership.
Well, let's discuss this when the report comes out.
Sorry.
Councilmember Crossman, do you have anything else?
I would say, yeah, I'd love to see the report, uh, might be some good ideas, um, but alongside that, I don't think the city's in the business to be a business. I don't think government's has anything to do with it, been, their business to be businesses. If some developer wants to build something for us, they rent it out to SBC and all these other places, let the developer do that. Not, not the government for most of these, mostly ideas that I heard that were coming through, but like I said, there might be something that. You know, somebody suggested like, oh yeah, that's an awesome idea, never thought of that. Then, yeah, so.
That's basically.
All right, moving on, Councilmember Smith, your initiatives.
I don't have any.
All right.
You're welcome.
Should've shared, Councilmember Hess.
Uh, I have a question, reference to your report.
Yes, sir.
There's been, uh, some changeover of people having left the city, uh, employment. How are we going about filling a lot of those roles, I mean, how, how, like, I, I believe we need a communications director. We, I, uh, city administrator, unless our stents, uh, chief stencil's gonna, uh, step in and be that. Uh, what are some of the other positions that are key positions that you saw that we need to fill?
Sure, so again, second day, uh, so it's a lot, a lot of still evaluating, and this is gonna be a. I, I'm not gonna drag it out or anything process wise, but, um, my thoughts on, I think one of the most. High priority right now is the city administrator position, I think, um, Chief Stansel is doing a great job building in right now, and, um. You know, we don't know what that, what the timeline exactly is gonna be like, but it's gonna be, we're gonna be aggressive with it, we're gonna, um, hopefully have some in the next, uh. Next couple of meetings, discuss a little bit further about, um, next steps for, um, city administrator, there's a lot of factors that also go into it. You know, there's, there's a fiscal impact as well, um. Part of that is, the longer we don't have a city administrator, um, like a, a, a full time, not full time, a, a permanent. That we also incur expenses as well, or we gain, um, s- some budget back, and, you know, we're, we're not necessarily. There's, you know, leave and, um, whoever's negotiated for, um. At, for the exit, for, um, our last city administrator, that, that's a fiscal impact, so we still gotta, um. We still gotta consider that as well, so, that being said, uh, Chief Stansel's doing a great job so far. Staff is very impressed by him, um, he's, I'm very impressed by him, the way he's leading some of our leadership meetings and some of the folks he's chatting with. How proactive he's been, so I'm, I'm confident that Chief Stansel can do, um, the job well, and for as long as we need him to do. That said, it's not gonna be a drawn out process, we're gonna, we're gonna make a decision, um, in this first half of the year, so. Um, and that process through the whole thing is, I'll bring a list of applicants, or we'll do the interview process, and, um. And I'll bring my decision to the council as my appointment, also at that point, we'll either confirm or deny. There's not many positions where you would confirm or, um, deny a position, but city minister is absolutely one of them that council has to, uh, make that decision on. That's the top priorities, getting that position, there's also other, um, positions, as you said, uh, with Chief Stansel also. Retiring this year as police chief, uh, we need to fill that position as well. Assistant Chief Carlson is doing a great job, um, especially the last few days and last months, few months even, he's doing a lot of, um. Work to build up for that, um, transition as well, he will be a, um. I, I don't believe that's a council, we'll double check, it is a council.
That, that is too, yes.
All the, is it, every department had that.
He's chief and city minister.
So that'll be another decision that, um, that I will make at the appointment, and council will go ahead and approve or deny. Um, of course, I'm gonna work with y'all to make sure that we're all on the same page, I'm not gonna choose someone y'all absolutely hate, so we'll. Absolutely have your input and all, and during that process. So that's another one, so, um, we'll have, when Chief Stansel retires, we will put in, um, appoint. Um, chief, assistant chief Carlson to that chief position, um, as the interim. As we do our search similarly to this, um, what we have right now with city administrator. Um, your other positions you're talking about, there are a few, um, communications is one of them, it's not a communications director. And, but it's a communications position, it's like a specialist position, and that is something that we're talking about, we're discussing, um, executive assistant. Um, we're trying to, we're, we're talking about a few different positions, but at this point, I'm still evaluating, um, where we're at right now. You know, like I said, I know I keep saying beating dead horse, but it is my second day, and so. That is understanding where we're strong, where we're weak, um, what areas we need a little more help in. And so we're making that evaluation, and I'm doing as fast as I can, and I'll, um, absolutely update council on as we progress. How, what positions we're doing, or we're looking to fill, um, the timeline on that and all that, so, does that answer?
No, that, that does, as I said, I just, I wanted to kinda get a timeline from you of all these open positions of how we're gonna get them filled, so we can become. One hundred percent fully functional city.
We, in the past, you know, we've, none of you all been on council at that time, um, but there's. What was it, over a year that we had no, um, official city administrator?
Just about, yeah.
So it, I, I don't want that to happen, you know, um, so, we're, we're absolutely actively, um, working on that.
That was my one question, I've got nothing else on this.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Hess. Councilmember Kaminsky, any initiatives?
Thanks for the reminder to keep going with the committees that we're already on. I've gotta remember what, what I was doing before the big vacation. Um, and, uh, Josh, just for fun, when I first went on council, and I'll have to do again, I looked up, like, what is a city, what is a municipality, what is it? And I was shocked to see that the word business actually was in the definition, that we do, a city does operate like a business, so.
It does, yes.
So, putting that aside, um, I have no initiatives, I guess the closest one I have right now is working with Mr. Cody. We are talking about doing something to enhance the existing roundabout at the entry to Yell. And maybe coordinating it with the new ones to come, so planning well in the future, so we have everything that we want.
Get that R I P graffiti off of there?
On the front, on the front main.
On the roundabout, oh yeah. Yeah, so today when I drove through.
Well, if it is, we'll, we'll take care of it.
It must've been really fresh and then maybe last night or this morning then.
But other than that, I'm excited to see all the new faces and it's, it's gonna be a really great term and we're gonna do some great things together.
Yeah, it's good to.
Thank you, Mayor DePinto, for letting us be here like this.
And no, I'm very happy and, you know, it's been a long time since we've actually had this, uh, this interaction and. This was a good meeting, uh, we, we asked a lot of stuff out, uh, especially, I was pretty impressed by the. Depth of some of the stuff that you're all talking about, uh, the questioning, um, all that. Um, it was good, it was good meeting, I do wanna say, in the future, someone, so one of the other, um. Things I'm gonna be working on in for committees is to have more ownership in these committees. I like to assign each, uh, each council member as a chair of that committee and we'll probably do, um, council member, our committees of three again. Um, I want a chair of each of those committees to have a little more say, a little more buy in. And, um, to be a little more responsible during committee reports to discuss that, what you, um, did and we'll, you know, we'll ask. Or with staff to have exactly what, uh, we discussed and all that written up, so when we give reports, um, regarding, um, the public works or public. I always wanna say public works, can we just go back to that, public service, um, committee and. Going down, like if I was chair of the, as a council member, if I was chair of that committee, I, we were talking about, um, the dog park and blah, blah, blah. I'd have all that laid out, um, printed out for us, so I can give the report on, this is what we discussed in our committee. Um, and also to help answer questions too, like, some of the things that we've discussed in the past are things that, um. In city council meetings are things that we also discuss in these committee hearings too, these committee meetings, so, um. We have a little more ownership, we have a little more, um. I don't know, um. More ownership and more formality of these, yeah, absolutely, so I'm looking forward to having, um, committees return and as soon as we do have our. Um, sixth and seventh council member and we're full again, we'll get right on that, I've already discussed with all y'all, um. Um, committees that you're wanting, um, stuff like that, what your interests are, as soon as I hear from the other two, we'll go ahead and make those decisions, but. You're, hopefully, we're not gonna be putting you on committees that you don't want, you know, it's, yeah, so, yeah. Councilmember Blair, do you have something?
Regarding that, so, would it be, so when we're doing our reports after a council meeting? Basically, you're expecting whoever, whoever your chair is of that, maybe that's who's gonna do the report. Rather than three of us.
I have a mulligan, uh, preference, the two hundred page document that comes to everybody, preparation for the meeting. Uh, something I would like to ask, I don't know if it's included or not, but if there's going to be charts, graphics or anything else like that, could those be included as well? So that in case, you know, we can look at it, we can kind of get an idea of what's about to be discussed, what's about to be shown up there on the, uh. Screen, so that then we can, you know, if we wanna have little notes or go, uh, a little confused about something on here, please explain.
I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Is there any way they could do a summary, like highlight summary of this two hundred page report?
Well, oftentimes it's the financials and I, I learned that the hard way, the first time I went to prep one. Like ninety pages of budget, yeah.
Councilmember Smith is right, a lot of it is that, but sometimes they are also agreements, um, contracts that we have, so, I mean. For the contracts, I would read through it, you don't have to like be an attorney, but. Be an eagle eye, but understand the basics of it and.
A ninety page report can say the city's budget is one hundred percent balanced.
Yeah, well.
You know, there are no anomalies in this report.
Yeah, we'll give a good summary of that too, yeah, absolutely.
Council should approve, that's what we'll do.
It was one thing that I do want, um, to be more clear, um, like the who, what, where, when, why, just the basics, what we need to do and I. Talked about that in our leadership meeting, that, um, it needs to be as easy as it can for council to understand, to read it. Um, to understand what the big impacts are, why we're doing it.
Big picture in addition to all the millions of details.
Yeah, and so it'll have those details for those questions.
Ryan's gonna do the details for us.
It sounds like it. Councilmember Crossman?
It's, um, the list of all, this may be on the, is it on the website, all the committees and what they're for?
Um, I don't think what.
Last page of each agenda.
But I don't believe they have a description, if that's what you're asking, like, a function of it.
Some, yeah, I don't, I don't know and I don't know the purpose of them, like.
All right, first meeting y'all, we will, um. Get a motion to adjourn?
You don't need one, this is a study session.